We are back live and recording so we can begin. Thank you.
Okay, the board has reconvened to the open session. Do I have a motion to approve the settlement authority item as presented and discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Myra, please call the roll.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom? Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvert?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
The motion passed.
If there is no further business, I would request a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Hold on, we will just stop recording. Start. And we are ready to begin. Thank you.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the AFA meeting for Friday, October 18th, 2024. Ms. Bennett, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Present.
Commissioner Beach?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Gladney?
Present.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Galladay?
Here.
Commissioner Isom?
Here.
Commissioner Calvert?
Here.
Commissioner Cox?
Here.
You can proceed.
The minutes have been provided to the committee for review. Are there any corrections to the minutes? I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in-
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any abstention? The motion has passed. Next on the agenda is the contract award for talent management solution. I will ask Diane Bench for a comment.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Bi-State Development is in need of a technology solution that can support talent management functions around talent acquisition, onboarding, performance management, learning and development, merit and cost of living increases, and succession planning. This technology helps create efficiencies across talent management and also provides tools for reporting and data analytics. Our current technology solution contract is expiring. As such, Bi-State Development issued an RFP solution on July 15th of 2024 using our standard process. In response to this solicitation, five vendors sent proposals. The evaluation team included-
Five vendors sent proposals. The evalu-
I'm sorry, I just heard some feedback, so I'm not sure if you were able to hear. Was everyone able to hear what I said?
I wasn't.
Okay, I'll start that part over. Our current technology solution contract is expiring. So Bi-State Development issued an RFP solicitation in July of 2024 using our standard process. In response to this solicitation, we received five proposals from five different vendors. The evaluation team included staff members from Human Resources and HRIS, Employee Relations, Talent Acquisition, Total Rewards, Learning Management, and IT. The evaluation criteria focused on organizational qualifications, experience, financial stability of the firm, references, business requirements, and technology requirements. After the initial evaluation, the evaluation team unanimously agreed to invite two of the vendors back to conduct a presentation and demonstration of their technical proposal. This final evaluation was conducted on September 17th. Based on the final combined consensus scoring, the evaluation team committee unanimously agreed and recommends that Cornerstone, who was the highest ranking firm and the most advantageous to Bi-State Development in terms of cost and other factors, that they are considered as capable for providing the desired talent management solution. As such, the management team recommends that the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval this request to award a contract to Cornerstone for the talent management solution. The contract would be for three base years and two one-year period options for a total not to exceed $1,288,754. This project would be funded through the operating budget. What questions do you have?
Are there any questions for Ms. Bench? Hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve this item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
May I get- All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passed.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bench. Next on the agenda is the contract modification cellular phone service. I will ask Tom Curran for comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. This item is a request for an extension of an existing contract with T-Mobile for our cellular phone services. In October of 2019, Bi-State entered into a five-year contract with T-Mobile to provide cellular phone service including smartphones, tablets, hotspots, SIM cards, and other communication equipment. We currently have 625 phones and tablets, 50 hotspots, 690 SIM cards, and 50 other devices under this contract. T-Mobile has installed equipment in our MetroLink tunnels and also an additional facility to provide coverage for areas would not normally have coverage from any provider at no cost to Bi-State. This request for an extension is due to the amount of manpower that would be required to switch to another carrier, the cost of which would be substantial. Swapping out phones would take approximately two hours per device or 1,250 staff hours, and hotspot replacements would require 30 minutes per device for an additional 25 staff hours. Our buses, trains, color ride vans, and some transfer facilities utilize the SIM cards to provide connectivity for live video and also for customer Wi-Fi. Swapping out all the SIM cards is estimated to require an additional 345 staff hours plus coordination and physical access to all vehicles. Due to the cost in dollars and staff time, an extension of the existing contract is being requested. Management is requesting that the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners for final approval this request for a two-year extension for Bi-State's existing contract with T-Mobile for cellular phone services in a not to exceed amount of $410,000 with a contract end date of October 31st, 2026, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Tom, was there any negotiations done with T-Mobile on getting this price reduced?
So I have requested that information from procurement, and I'm just getting a text. It depends on the type of service, but I will try to answer that more clearly in a few minutes. I've been told that I will receive an email to answer. If you can bear with me, we can always circle back if you'd like to have that detail. It looks like the rates for the five-year total was $606,000. This is for employee cellular services, and for the total five-year cost, it was 1.84 million. So the negotiations, I believe, were done through our IT department. And that's all the information I have, Commissioner, but if that's insufficient, we can circle back.
Thank you.
So this is just one two-year contract then, correct?
Yes, that's right, two years.
So it's 410 for two years, and then it was 600 for five?
Well, the actual, there's, I'm sorry, I'm reading this on the fly. So the combined service was $369,000 for the last option year. The five-year total was 1.8 million. So again, I'm trying to do my math on the fly. But let me, if this is insufficient information, I will try to find out what the negotiations of those values were.
I would like to see more information on that myself.
So, all right, so it looks like it's about $100,000 cumulatively less than the five-year option for all services, but let me, let me try to get you that information. If I can do that during this meeting, I will.
Thanks.
Okay, Tom, we'll come back to you. So we'll hold, we'll hold on the vote. Thank you. Going to item number seven, Pension Audit Update. I would ask Carmen Brothers for comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm presenting item seven of our pension plan audit update for your information only. Annually, we engage with an outside accounting firm who audits our three defined pension benefits based upon their separate plan years. That outside audit firm is UHY LLC. Those detailed audit reports are attached to the briefing paper for your information. The ATU and IBW pension audit reports and financial statements are for plan year ended March 31st, 2024, and for the salary plan for year ended May 31st, 2024. I am pleased to report that all three plans receive an unmodified or clean audit opinion with no notable variances or concerns identified. We are in the process with UHY LLC finishing up a like audit of our 401K defined contribution plan and expect to present its findings in January 2025. And with that, I will entertain any questions you may have on item number seven.
So this item was presented as information only, and Ms. Brothers, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Items number eight through 10, Internal Audit Department Follow-Up First Quarter FY 2025, Internal Audit Department Status Report First Quarter FY 2025, Internal Audit Department State Safety Oversight Status Report Third Quarter Calendar Year 2024. These items are being presented as information only, and I will ask Crystal Messner for comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Agenda item number eight provides an update for the first quarter follow-ups. We had 25% that were closed and with 75 remaining open. There are currently no overdue follow-ups at this time, and our internal audit department has continued to work with management to address those remaining open corrective action plans. For agenda item number nine, that's Internal Audit Status Report for the first quarter, which reflects two audit closures. We have two audits that are in final phases and four audit projects that are in progress with anticipated completion in mid fiscal year 25. Internal Audit continues to collaborate closely with the legal department on special projects and investigations. In addition, Internal Audit has continued partnering with our IT department and their initiatives, which now includes a new CIO and CISO that we have currently been working with. For agenda item number 10, this details the third quarter of the calendar year scheduled for the state safety oversight activities. Those listed in the briefing paper that were planned were conducted as planned, and the SSO internal audit activities are anticipated to conclude during this quarter. The continued collaboration with the state safety oversight agencies, our state, our safety department and management over at Metro resulted in the closure of two MetroLink caps and three loop trolley corrective action plans. Internal Audit continues to collaborate with various management and departments and of course, our state safety oversight agencies on these corrective actions for anything that is remaining open, and of course, we are trying to always look out for continuous program improvement opportunities within our state safety oversight. These agenda items are presented for informational purposes only, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Messner? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Messner. Item number 11, Treasurer Report. This item is being presented as information only, and I will ask Tammy Fulbright for comment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. First, I just want to give a quick update on our audit. So we are in the process of our financial audit currently. We have a few items that they are still working on, and we are going to present that in the next, actually in the board meeting. So I just wanted to give a quick update on that. We actually had presented some of this information from June in the past for the Treasurers Report, but I'm going to just briefly just summarize that quickly. So really, our Bi-State directed funds at June 30th were 434 million, and we had an average rate of return of five, a little over 5%. Our trustee-directed funds were 55 million, also just a little over 5%. And then just a quick comment on the fuel hedge. So through June 30th, we had realized gains of 1.1 million. So year-to-date cost for fuel per gallon with the hedge is $2.34 compared to our budget at $2.82. So we were a little around 50 cents under budget, which is very good. But we will have more to comment on and more information at the next meeting, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Fulbright? Hearing none. Item number 12, the Treasury Safekeeping Report through June 30th. This item is being presented as information only, and I will ask Ms. Messner for comments.
Thank you. The agenda item number 12 is Internal Audits Treasury Safekeeping Accounts report that pairs with the report that Ms. Tammy Fulbright just presented. We did determine that the accounts exist and the respective balances, credit ratings, and fuel hedging is stated fairly in that treasurer report. Collateral posted by PNC Bank in conjunction with FDIC insurance is sufficient and adequately collateralizes BSD deposits at the PNC Bank. This is just presented for informational purposes, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Messner? Hearing none. We will go to item number 13, which is the procurement report. This item is being presented as information only. Tom, turn. Do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. The procurement report for the first quarter of fiscal year 2025 begins on page 124 of your committee packet, and it has four components. The first is the non-competitive procurement trend for the first quarter of fiscal year 2025. Non-competitive procurements for the quarter totaled $4.5 million or 15.5% of the total purchase order volume of 29.1 million. During the past 12 months, non-competitive procurements constituted about 4.3% of all procurement spending. The second component is the procurement card transactions report. There were no confirmed procedural violations during the first quarter of fiscal year 2025. During this quarter, there were 1,956 transactions made with procurement cards for a total cost of $751,000 or an average of $384 per purchase. The third report is a list of all contracts over $100,000 for the first quarter. The largest of these was our contract with HNTB for MetroLink Station Secure Platform Design Services. And the final component of the procurement report is the contract modifications for the first quarter of fiscal year 2025. The modifications involved include exercising option years on existing contracts, service additions to current projects, and time extensions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the procurement report.
Any questions for Mr. Curran on the procurement report? Hearing none. Mr. Curran, do you have any updates for us on item number six for the contract modification?
So the combined cost that I've received from the procurement staff is $248,000 for, per year for Wi-Fi and $121,000 per year for no Wi-Fi, so just for the vehicle cost. So it would appear that the number is between both of those figures, but it's actually lower than the cost inclusive of Wi-Fi. So it looks like it is a savings for the extension compared to the $248,018.40 per year that we currently pay.
Comment as well, Chair? And that is, the T-Mobile contract, the key component of the five-year contract was actually enhancement of the Wi-Fi and cellular services through our downtown tunnel. Traditionally, we had had a significant blank spot in cellular coverage and Wi-Fi in the tunnel, and since we do own and operate the tunnel, we had to put enhanced pieces of equipment through that contract with T-Mobile, and that was not of cost to us, except we had to commit to the five-year contract. So I think some of that context is important to why we only have a single purveyor as far as the tunnel specifically is. We would have to then have other purveyors put their equipment in the tunnel as well, and they left a channel open to us so that our customers can access Wi-Fi through the tunnel operation. But I think it might make sense to have a fuller kind of memo noting that, and certainly maybe that makes sense as the Commissioners are just asking for more context and information. I think that's a reasonable request, and so Commissioner AJ, if I'd offer that, maybe what we could do is pull this item and kind of circle back and make a more simplified memo to that effect and present it to the Commissioners at our full board meeting in its own separate item as opposed to contained within a consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. So we'll withdraw number six until the next full board meeting?
Yes, ma'am. I think that makes sense. It's always makes sense. If everybody wants a little bit more information and explanation, that adds clarity, that we go ahead and do that.
Great, thank you.
Talby, just maybe somebody in the room can maybe turn your mic down. It's really distorted. It might help you.
Either that or he has some battery issues. He's real scratchy.
Very garbled.
Right, thank you. Moving on to item number 14, Unscheduled Business. Mr. Roach, is there any unscheduled business?
How's that? Is that a little better?
Sounds like a little bit.
Okay, I just changed microphones. Thank you, Commissioner Cox. I had no idea, so thank you for that. I do not have any unscheduled business, but I can just very briefly go into my comments. And my one comment is that from an audit and finance standpoint, what's most important is that we are moving into, the most important is the FY 2026 budget work. The team is working very, very diligently on that. Tammy Fulbright and her team are lit up about it, and we're moving forward. Remember, our goal is to get that, keep our growth rate between 1% and 1.5%. We had, we had a little bit of an increase from last year. As the Commissioners know, that was almost exclusively because of our three-year ATU contract, but I will remind everybody that that contract was very front-loaded. So we think it is very reasonable for us to return to our regular trajectory, and I'm very excited about moving forward on that. And staff has already started the very hard work to be sure that our budget process is moving. So I just want to thank everybody in advance for that work, and I want the Commissioners to know that, that financial integrity and reasonable growth rates on a year-over-year basis is an absolute tenet as far as I am concerned and staff is concerned, and that expectation is a reasonable one to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Item number 16, Call for Dates for Future Meetings. Ms. Bennett, will you give a summary of upcoming board and committee meeting dates, please?
Yes, the final meeting for the year is scheduled to be held on November 15th. That's a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. That meeting will begin at 8:30 a.m. The next meetings are scheduled to be held in January. Those are for the Safety and Security Committee meeting on January 9th, Operations Committee and Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meetings, which will be held on January 24th, all of them starting at 8:30 a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Item number 17, Arrangement to Executive Session, and the only item for consideration under the executive agenda is approval of the minutes of the August 16th, 2024 Operation Committee Executive Session. If there are no corrections to these minutes and no discussion is needed, the committee will proceed to a vote without going into executive session. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the August 16th, 2024 Operation Committee Executive Session as presented as a closed record?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Bennett, will you poll the committee?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvert?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney? Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
And Commissioner Jackson Jennings?
Yes. If there's no-
Motion passed.
Thank you. If there's no further business, I will entertain a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Minute to move people around. We're ready to begin. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Operations Committee meeting for February Friday, October 18th, 2024. Roll call, please, Mrs. Bennett.
Commissioner Moore?
Present.
Commissioner Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Galladay?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Isom?
Here.
Commissioner Calvert?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson Jennings? Commissioner Beach?
Present.
Commissioner Simmons?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney? And you can proceed.
Great. Ms. Bennett, are there any public comments that were received for this meeting? Ms. Bennett, are there any public comments that were received for this meeting?
Chair, no, there were no public comments submitted for today's meetings.
Great. We'll move on to item four. Approval of the minutes that were provided to you in your packet. If there are no corrections or additions to the August 16th, 2024 minutes, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
I so moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed or extensions? All in favor? Can I hear it?
Aye.
Happy, Mr. Stewart. Item five, sole source modernization of E S R A circuit boards, and we'll ask Tom Curran for comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a request for authorization to enter into a sole source contract with Canor Brake Company, the original equipment manufacturer of the Ezra friction brake system on our current MetroLink light rail vehicles, to provide modernized circuit boards for MetroLink's braking system. Metro operates three fleets of A C light rail vehicles, and each of those trains contains one M B zero three and one M B zero four circuit board that need to be replaced as part of Metro's reliability-centered maintenance program. Metro wishes to purchase 26 units each of the M B zero three and M B zero four circuit boards to ensure continuous operation of our A C powered trains. The M B zero three and M B zero four circuit boards are critical safety components of the train's brake system, which was designed by Canor Brake Company. Replacement of these circuit boards will provide reliability and safety for MetroLink operations as these products have software coding and circuit architecture that are proprietary to Canor Brake Company. The company first announced developments of these new circuit boards in May 2020 as the original Ezra circuit boards were becoming obsolete, and it is now time to replace these units as our existing boards can no longer be repaired. Management is recommending that the Operations Committee recommend to the Board of Commissioners that the President and CEO be authorized to enter into a sole source contract with Canor Brake Company for replacement of the M B zero three and M B zero four circuit boards for our A C light rail fleet and the not-to-exceed amount of $600,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Curran?
Tom, what is the life expectancy of these boards? Do you have that?
I don't know if there is anyone from engineering that is on this call, but I actually do not have that information. I apologize, Commissioner, but I can try to find out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Any other questions?
So can I note, I'm sorry, I'm in the middle of a lot of L R V stuff right now. I can partially answer that question. So obviously, Siemens is manufacturing our new replacement vehicles. That's going on right now, as you all know. But that first vehicle does not arrive until the first quarter, actually February of 2027. So we got to, we got to get there. This is the brake provider, the subcontractor on the Siemens vehicles. So and Siemens would concur with the modernization of these vehicles. One, one thing that our maintenance team has gotten is we have gotten more mileage than just about anybody else across the country. The one downside of that is that we do have some circuits and componentry on these much older vehicles that are more difficult to upgrade. Or for instance, we can't repair the old circuit boards. So we had to go to the new ones, but it makes sense to get us to that gap as the new vehicles will not arrive again until February of '27. Vehicle one will actually take six months of testing, and then vehicle two arrives after that. And there's that normal gap because in testing, sometimes there will be some circuitry changes and programming changes that we will make to the subsequent vehicles. And then we're going to get a vehicle just about every single month for several years. So very exciting. But this gets us, most importantly, to that gap. And the braking systems have been very good. They've made it through all of their safety certifications. But this upgrade is really a circuit board-based one.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Motion passes. Item number six. Again, Tom Curran will discuss traction powers, substation feeder wire rehabilitation, time extension.
Thank you, Commissioner. As stated, this is a request to modify an existing contract with Whissler Electric for the traction power substation feeder wire rehabilitation. The Missouri Zero Four Traction Power Substation Feeder Wire Rehabilitation Contract includes reconfiguration of the electrical distribution circuits and associated infrastructure to service the Missouri MetroLink rail yard, while also allowing the substation the ability to power the mainline tracks during an emergency. Construction under this contract includes a new retaining wall and drainage improvements, new pad mount switch gears, feeder ducts and associated overhead catenary system work. Pad-mounted switchgear is a large box-like electrical unit that's used for railway electrification systems. It's designed for underground distribution systems of power that require above-grade operation. ByState received multiple competitive bids for this project, and on August 21st, the contract was awarded to Whissler Electric with an original substantial completion date anticipated by March of 2025. However, Whissler has notified Metro that the estimated lead time of 10 months for acquiring the pad mount switchgear exceeds the project target completion date. So the contract must be extended. A zero-cost time extension of more than 180 days does require Board of Commissioners' approval. So management is recommending that the Operations Committee accept this request to authorize the President and CEO to modify ByState's existing contract with Whissler Electric to extend the traction power substation feeder wire rehabilitation projects completion date to December 31st, 2025, with no additional cost to Metro. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the item as presented by Mr. Curran.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, or are there any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item seven, contract modification again, track systems upgrades, time extension, Mr. Curran.
Thank you. This agenda item is also a request to modify an existing contract, this time with Railworks Track Services for track system upgrades. The Track System Upgrades Project addresses rail maintenance needs to improve the condition of MetroLink's track system assets that have been targeted for replacement under Metro's Transit Asset Management Program. The scope elements are for tracks with condition ratings of two or lower. Railworks Track Services' current period of performance will expire on December 31st of this year, and the original scope of construction services cannot be completed within the remaining contract time because of the required lead time to acquire gauge widening ties. These are customized ties that require more time to produce because the tooling must be adjusted throughout the production period for the various gauge requirements. Railworks has submitted a no-cost change order request for a 180-day extension due to reengineering and the associated material manufacturing delivery dates. Management is recommending that the Operations Committee accept and forward for approval this request to authorize the President and CEO to modify ByState's existing contract with Railworks Track Services to adjust the Track System Upgrades contract completion date to August 25th of 2025 with no additional cost to ByState. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, Commissioners, of Mr. Curran?
Tom, does any extensions like this create any more liability on our end on the replacement of this material?
You know, we want, we want to keep our tracks in the best condition that we can, and the gauge widening ties are used to correct rails that have moved laterally or rotated. So I guess in a sense, there is some liability, but again, the gauge widening, the changes in the rails can occur due to railway over time because of the weight of the trains and other conditions. So while it is additional time to make these products, to make those corrections, I don't think, I still think that we're pursuing the right path.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the items as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Again, a contract award, Gateway Arch Marketing Advertising Agency, Mr. Curran.
Management is presenting to the Operations Committee this request for authorization to award a five-year contract for marketing and advertising services for the Gateway Arch and Riverboats to Osborne and Bar Communications. On June 28th, ByState issued a solicitation to obtain proposals from qualified firms to develop and execute a comprehensive marketing strategy for the Arch and Riverboats, including brand management, visitor engagement, and tourism promotion. Four proposals were received from firms listed in the briefing paper, and the proposals were evaluated and scored according to the technical requirements in the solicitation. The evaluation team consisted of six ByState Tourism and Innovation Marketing Team members and one National Park Service representative. Three firms were shortlisted for formal presentations. Based on the presentation's technical and cost scoring, Osborne and Bar Communications was the highest ranking proposer. Management is recommending that the Operations Committee accept and forward to the Board for approval an authorization for the President and CEO to enter into a five-year marketing contract with Osborne and Bar Communications for the Gateway Arch and Riverboats for a not-to-exceed cost of $2,213,000, excuse me, $2,213,750. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Curran? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the item as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any oppositions or any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion passes. Item nine, MetroLink Green Line Memorandum of Agreement, and that will be presented by our President, Talby Roach.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I'm hoping that my microphone is working well. Can I get a thumbs up now? Yeah, okay, very good. So this is a follow-up M O A contract, which is in line with how, exactly how the the Board has been briefed to date. This is just formalizing the past memorandum through the full Board, through the Board of Aldermen in St. Louis City and through, of course, the Mayor's Office. This authorizes us to access $10 million through the EcoDevo tax, which was passed overwhelmingly by the public in April the 4th of 2017 to support the development of the Green Line. So this is just setting our money up as we continue to move forward. And this will allow me to sign that M O A and so that we have access to the money to pay for the good work that is going on. We have entered into project development. That project is going quite well. As a matter of fact, just to brief the Board, we have had since May of last year over 40 public meetings. We are moving forward expeditiously with the project management consultant team led by H N T B. We've had many, many public meetings. We are moving forward on the fundamental engineering. Tammy's team has been very good about funding those, and then, of course, Mr. Paylor's team has been good about moving forward on that. You guys have also met Pranaya Shrestha, who is the lead from the consultant team. Pranaya has been in town quite, quite a bit. We're moving very well with the Mayor's Office and, for instance, the Aldermen and so on. I don't expect to have, we will have some pushback from some neighborhoods as we always do. A project of this size always has a little bit of issues to move through, and I am anticipating those. But so far, it's going really quite well. We had a really good public event with C M T earlier this week. That was very, very well attended, and we plan on moving the project forward. We've had a lot of very, very good response from our partners in F T A in D.C. and in District Seven out of Kansas City. In fact, we've had some very positive reviews on the preliminary tours, and they're excited about the prospect of the project to ultimately gain full funding. So we're moving forward on the project, but we do need to go through the technical parts and be sure that the city of St. Louis is indeed paying the bills because that is how the M O A works. And this allows me to do that. So I would appreciate everybody's endorsement and I'm happy to answer any questions on how the project is going.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion and a second to approve the item as presented.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, the motion passes. Item 10, December 2024 Service Change and Planning Update. The information will be presented, excuse me, this is an information-only item, and it'll be presented by Jessica Gerschman, giving Mr. Curran a chance to catch his breath.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'm pleased to be with you this morning to share an overview of upcoming service change that we have on December 2nd, 2024. This is a part of a larger effort that we've undertaken to implement strategic service for metro transit. In order to optimize our transit service for both current and future conditions, staff have been engaged since 2023 in analyses and a planning process that has focused on improving our reliability, our resilience, and our relevance for transit in this region. We've been using key performance metrics such as access to jobs to evaluate different service packages against each other. We brought you an overview of this process at the beginning of this calendar year, and so now we're here to provide an update of our progress. So as you know, under Mr. Stewart's steady leadership over the last couple of years, there has been a concerted effort to increase recruitment, training, and retention of our frontline operational workforce. Due to successful and continued hiring efforts in that space, Metro has been able to act upon a core principle, which is increasing frequency where transit demand is greatest. So where we have the most people riding, we want to put the most service and most trips that stands to overall benefit the region the most. So when we implemented service changes in January and June of 2024, we were able to collectively restore about 10% of bus service, which is great. So now the next step in that process, which is iterative, is beginning, is being planned for December 4th. This change is redesigning routes and service on 19 bus routes in both Illinois and Missouri to reflect updated travel patterns that, you know, people have changed how they move around the region in the last few years, and of course, to maximize our service that we can offer within our changing resource levels. So the types of changes we're making in December range from reorganizing routes, combining and splitting some, and also extending some service. Some places are being served, being planned for December that we haven't been able to serve since pre-pandemic. So we've also had a really robust engagement to develop these changes. We worked first with metro bus managers to build up these proposals. We then sat down with senior bus operators and vetted the changes and made a lot of adjustments from those great conversations. And lastly, of course, we've engaged transit riders and the general public. We had a series of eight public open houses in the last month. And lastly, of course, we've engaged transit riders and the general public. We had a series of eight public open houses in the last month. So again, this information is being presented for information only, but I welcome any questions the Commissioners may have about this upcoming service change or the ongoing strategic planning overall.
Did I, did I hear, did I hear you say it's going to have changes on the Illinois side also?
Yes, sir. There's five changes. We worked closely with Mr. Sharkey and his team to develop those, and they're actually an implementation of the consulting process he went through with the Transit Vision two thousand twenty plan. So they're kind of on the, on the tail end of getting all that into place.
Fine, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? We'll move forward then to item twelve. I'm sorry, to President Roche, unscheduled business. Any unscheduled business?
I have no unscheduled business.
Great. Item twelve, moving on. Mr. Stewart, Operations Report.
Thank you and good morning, everyone. Just want to piggyback on Jessica. Great report, Jessica. Jessica kind of gave you an overview of how we do these service changes and the kinds of resources that are necessary for us to make the changes in the system, provide the service that our customers certainly deserve in this region. It's, but it's not quite, it kind of made you think it's a science, but it's not a science at all. And we have some, we have various technology that we use to do it, but it's really about some hard work. It's really about a team effort, Jessica's team, Denise Winters' operations team, Dale Schaefer's maintenance team. Everything's got to, got to come together for us to be able to drive that service. I've been talking to you all year about our recruitment efforts, and we're at the point now where I have six hundred and forty-five bus drivers, just less than one percent under budget. Budget is six fifty. I've got a hundred and seventy-six Colorado operators, two percent under budget. So that's what's kind of allowed us to do these things that we've been doing and make these steady increases throughout the year. The area where we're having, still having difficulty with mechanics. We have mechanics at all different categories, and generally, I'm about twenty percent down on mechanics. We're having another hiring again on November ninth, ten a.m. to two p.m. at our North County Transit Center. So I need mechanics. I need mechanics. We're still offering a five thousand dollar sign-on bonus for mechanics and Colorado operators. So Jessica kind of went through the, the service change, but again, it's all about the team. It's all about us working together. There's still some peaks here and there. We have some issues where every now and then with buses not being available to carry out certain service. So that requires management. Also a part of this December service change is changing things like where buses are exchanged, whether they're coming back to the, to the garage, we'll send the operator to the bus and keep it going. So we are strategizing ways to further enhance our system and to further enhance our frequency and availability. So we'll continue to work on that. I also want to give you an update on Colorado. We continue to hire and recruit and train, as I said, we have a hundred and seventy-six Colorado operators at this point, up from like what, one twenty, one ten at the beginning of the year. And our goal is one eighty, and I'm sure we're going to make that in the next couple of weeks. The kilometer for our success in our Colorado operator, operation in terms of improving our service is our denial rate. And as I've said many, many times, sixteen months ago, we had a denial rate of about forty-three percent, and we were putting out five thousand rides a week. We're now at about eight thousand rides a week. And for the last two weeks, I want everybody to cross their fingers, the last two weeks, we've had zero tonight. Zero. Don't know if we can keep that up. We're going to try very hard to do that. I still have operators in training. Probably get another twenty operators in the next several weeks. And we're really trying to work on that and keep that going. And I, you know, I owe that to my Colorado team, my A D A team, and my Colorado team. This board has been very gracious and given me accolades about the things that you have achieved, but it's all about the things, all about our citizens. We're working together. We're working for the benefit of our customers. Update on the, on the phone system in Colorado. We're increased calls, decreased wait times, no busy signals due to the phone upgrades. Customers have, are catching on. They're, they're trusting us a little bit more. So they're not calling at seven thirty. Ladies at eight o'clock, eight thirty, which means they'll get through quicker and be able to provide the necessary set of agents. Customers are also using a texting option and to check on the status of their rides and where they arrive and to count their rides. We're working on our software update, so Stair Labs. Our goal is to launch by the end of twenty twenty four. We started internal testing this week, and customers will be included in our testing. We had a meeting last week with, with, there are Mark, Mark, which is the ADA organization that was formed to kind of give us a push, keep us moving, to see some of the things that are necessary to approve, improve our ADA service. So we actually met with them last week. They issued us periodic report cards on us and our service, and we didn't discuss the report card. It was called the and what are the things that you're looking for when you need, how are we doing, how can we do things better? And one of the things we advanced to that meeting is that we need ten dollars a week to help us to start testing this new system. And so they're getting some people to get it for us. So another cooperative effort in moving forward the improvement that we need in our ADA operation. Some of the features of this new software are better trip routing. One of the things we, issues we have now, if somebody cancels a trip, how can I quickly reschedule again and get another ticket, another ticket to you? We're working on that. The software does text, phone, and email notifications. Scheduling options that were based on an app. And a new way for ADA customers to submit applications to those locations. We have formed the Accessibility Advisory Committee, and then to get feedback from people of all abilities in our transit area. Fifteen members have been selected out of hundreds of people that applied to be on this committee, and as I'm starting there, this, this committee's had to start going in the event. We continue to do near the connect, which is where we provide updates to the community on all aspects of the things that we provide. One virtual and three in-person sessions, various places around the region. The next set is on November first, six, seven, and eight. And that concludes my overview of operations, and I'd be happy to ask you any questions.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Stewart. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Beach.
Yeah, just Mr. Stewart. For the sake of any media reporters that are still listening after the Green Line vote, could you repeat the number of weekly Colorado rides we have, we provide?
Weekly ride? At this point?
No, Colorado.
Colorado, Colorado, we're providing about eight thousand rides.
Per week, per week.
Per week.
Amazing, thank you.
Great, thank you. One quick question, Mr. Stewart, just follow up. Have you resolved the issue that we saw on multiple times in the media? Was it Hampton?
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm, I'm glad you, I'm not glad, not glad you brought it up. But it gives you, gives an understanding of where we are. You know, in certain areas, that area in particular, that particular situation was a result of us not having a bus available at that specific time. You know, we've got all kinds of assets we have to manage, and one of the things we have to manage is the availability of buses. And because of the situation with, with our mechanics, we're not always where we need to be and miss some trips. But there are other things we can do and we are doing to mitigate that kind of situation. I've got seven mechanics in training right now, so we're, so we're getting there. But what I needed is not, so a lot of things are kind of automatic. A driver comes in, he gets in line, he waits for a bus so he can go out. If our next driver in line is that, maybe it's not the Hampton, right, somebody else. You need, you need to put more management in place than anything else. That if somebody's in the garage and saying, what's the next route that is, that needs special assistance? And so that next bus goes to that driver so that we can take care of that situation. So those are the kind of things that you have to add just to this, you know, you do a plan, but good planning to be implemented also needs good management, and management is a very important part.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any other questions of Mr. Stewart? In spite of all, Mr. Stewart, we appreciate your work and, and all you do to keep things moving, so.
And thank you very much for, for allowing me to have such a great team to work.
So you're making it tough. All right, Mr. Rose, is there a report?
Very good, thank you. Just very briefly, I, I'm going to follow up with Mr. Beach's comment. There are now two weeks with zero denials at A D A, and I'm, I'm sorry, I might want to say that ten times, but that extraordinary movement from five thousand rides a week to eight thousand rides a week, that, folks, that is real work, and that is getting, it, it has taken some time, fourteen months to build that, but you gave us a task to respond. I know in particular Commissioner Simmons and Commissioner Gladney were, were really keen on getting those employment numbers up, and it has happened. So I'm really, really proud of the team's performance there, and I just wanted to highlight it. The one weak, weak point that we still do have is mechanics. We still have that five thousand dollar bonus out for mechanics. This is obviously not only just a regional issue, but a national issue. So that's the one where we're a little still short on, but we're going to keep hammering it. And other than that, I'm very pleased with our everyday progress. We'll have a very brief executive session report. We are trying to, and being successful at limiting the executive sessions and bringing most of our business out into the open for the public to discuss. I'm also very happy that us as a team, our, our team with the Board of Commissioners have been successful at getting that done over the last several years. And I think it's a notable difference in how we conduct our regular business. I just wanted to highlight that, as we haven't talked about it in some time. So thank you very much, and that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Bennett, would you give us a summary of upcoming board and committee meeting dates, please?
Yes, as noted at the previous meeting, we have one remaining meeting for this year. That will be the Board of Commissioners meeting on November fifteenth, beginning at eight thirty a.m. The next meetings will be in January. Those include a Safety and Security Committee meeting on January ninth, an Operations Committee meeting, and an Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee meeting, both to be held on January twenty fourth. All of the meetings starting at eight thirty a.m.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to our executive session, I will entertain a motion and a second that the committee moves into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under By State Development Board Policy, Chapter Ten, Section one, zero point zero eight zero, D one, legal, and D two, real estate. Ms. Bennett, will you please pull a committee?
I will need a motion in a second.
That's right, you really need that first.
So moved.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, this one will recall, and I'm sorry, require a roll call vote?
Oh, roll call vote, sorry about that.
No problem. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Calvert?
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Great.